What we have available in the school and had some voice and choice in what they're doing. And they are just taking these leadership roles and running with them. The whole idea of the carnival cart hospitality, cart for teachers. They've got so many ideas. We're going to have a full blown store before you know it at Southview. The bulletin board, these girls, they are always working on that and getting ideas so artistic and bringing out talents. The younger, the primary teachers, first and second grade teachers are talking about how amazing it is to have our fifth grade students reading with our younger kids and the relationships that they're building. Huddle up is such a fantastic time to build community and build relationships within the school. And our fifth graders have taken an active role with that. And who would not want to watch a podcast? I mean, or listen to a podcast, right? Watch a broadcast, listen to a podcast. So we're really excited about all of those things that our student leaders are doing in the building. Thanks, guys.
See you, guys.
Yep.
Bye, Sean. Bye, Gus. Bye, Gus. That's Clive's little friend.
Clive and Gus.
I love it. Uh-oh.
Clive and Gus.
Clive and Gus. Watch out.
Yeah, sounds like a pair of outlaws.
Yeah. Clive is like the doer and Gus is definitely the...
Is he the planner?
No. That is not a good idea.
The conscience.
Okay, that's a...
Like my favorite little guy.
Okay, just a point of clarification or whatever, just to make sure that everyone knows that our board member Meredith Cole is joining us online tonight remotely via Zoom. Okay. Next, we have public comment. There we are. Come on up. GR, right?
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bailey, Vice President Switzer, Dr. Miller, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is GR Gordon-Ross and I am a proud 1993 graduate of Carney High School. Growing up in this town and attending school in this district shaped much of the success in my life. I'm a current resident of Lawrence, Kansas of the past 27 years. And so while I have learned to appreciate the K of a different color, Carney will always be my home. But I'm not here tonight to talk about myself. I'm here to talk about my mom. My mom, Diane Abe Gordon-Ross Weber, passed away on January 7th of this year. She was a remarkable woman who left a lasting impression on everyone she met. And while she was involved in many things throughout her life, tonight I want to focus on her contributions to the Carney School District. We moved to Carney in 1979 when my sister was five and I was four. And I don't know if this is still a thing that you do in the district, but because I was four, I was able to participate in the 13 years together picture in the yearbook, and she wasn't. So I was really excited about that moment. From the beginning, my mom was deeply involved in the school district, volunteering as a room mother, PTA, chaperone for parties, activities, and field trips. Later, she worked as a secretary at the building that was called the Annex. For a fourth grader, there was nothing cooler than having your mom as a school secretary, especially when she would use the all-call button to remind me to bring my spelling book home. A few, it's a true story. A few years later, she ran for the school board. And according to her, she became the first woman ever elected to the Carney Board of Education. It was not something that I ever fact-checked. Now that I'm actually saying it out in public, I really hope that it's true, but I have always taken her word for it. She served with incredible people, and she played a key role in building the new high school. One of her proudest moments was seeing her name on the dedication plaque that is still on the wall in that building today. When her time on the board ended, she continued to give back, spending Friday nights on the chain gang at-home football games, marking first downs for Carney football until she eventually moved to Lawrence. My mom believed deeply in public education and in giving back to institutions that shaped her life and ours. Inspired by her legacy of service, I am now serving my second term on the Lawrence Board of Education. She was a remarkable woman, but not unlike countless others who have served and will serve the students, staff, and families of this district. But to me, she embodied what it means to be a servant leader, someone who gives back to their community and leaves a legacy of service for others to follow. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's report. Thank you, President Bailey. You will announce in your seats tonight a gold gift bag. And I just wanted to point out, that's from the Carney Education Association. So they're very appreciative of the work that you're doing. So wanted to pass that along. And just really for the rest of the audience, you know, tonight, it was, we had a nice fall celebration where we recognized our activities and athletics. And because we had so many students participate, we had to change the venue to the high school. And you never want to take that for granted, that the fact that we were recognizing well over 100 students. So we recognized members of the band, cross-country, cheer, and football. So again, it was a great way to start the evening. Recognitions, one of the things I would like to also point out, you know, with the January Winter Blast that we had not too long ago, we had some people that went above and beyond. Our grounds crew led by Drew Schweitzer, our custodial crew led by Jerry Stanger, our maintenance crew led by Jeremy McQuary, transportation, Tisa Wright, the early morning crew, Eric Nolan and Ray Wykel, and then our teachers, who really kind of dusted off the AMI protocol and made that happen. So a lot goes into when we have to call school off, and a lot of work happens behind the scenes. And I just want to give a sincere thank you to those individuals. You know, piggybacking with that, we've reinstituted AMI due to Senate Bill 727. And I just wanted to just mention, we do have two bills that have been filed that would allow us to, if the board approved, 169-day calendar or more, hopefully, they would not penalize us for inclement weather days. So, you know, we're going to continue to watch that. But again, wanted to say thank you to our staff. And last week, Ellie Stewart and I made a trip to Jefferson City, and we met with the other groups that are involved in the Success Ready Student Network. This group is a group of about 40 school districts that are really trying to push ahead and carve a new path in the state of Missouri, really trying to develop and adopt a continuous improvement framework, really trying to push the state to look at how we can assess students differently, so that we don't have a one-time end-of-year summative assessment, that we start to change our thought and look at a through assessment. So we're looking at assessment data, fall, winter, spring, which is why we adopted the NWA. It also pushes districts to look at competency-based learning. How can children show mastery other than just seat time and grades? And then also, there's a strong commitment to real-world learning. We know that we're a leader in that area, thanks to Dr. Nicely and his work, starting all the way back in 2018. So that's some of the work that's been happening in the district. Thank you.
Ms. The consent engine to be approved is presented.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Information items, Bond Project update.
Good to see you all again. My name's Joe Brown with Newkirk Novak. Just want to give you kind of a quick update. Looking at Carney Elementary right there, you can see we've had some challenges with the weather over the past month with all the snow and the cold temperatures. But I can say on all three projects, we are still on schedule and our end date hasn't been impacted. Currently tenting and running heat inside of those, in that scaffold right there, so that our mason can continue. What you don't see in that picture at Carney Elementary is the front entrance. We were able to demo the front entrance canopy. We have installed the temporary tunnel for access into the building. Those footings and foundations are complete. CMU starter courses are complete. And Slabon Grade is going to be scheduled to go in on the 24th of this month. So that's kind of your update for Carney Elementary. Here, we're looking at Dogwood. Again, weather's been difficult. You can see the snow around the site, but we're able to clear off this Slabon Grade, which was completed. Masonry is working, just like Carney Elementary. I believe Hawthorne and Dogwood both are scheduled to be complete around the 14th of February on the masonry. So that's your update for Dogwood. And then here at Hawthorne, things look a little different today. All of that tenting is gone, and they're moved on to the next section. So similar to the other two schools, Slabon Grade is complete here. Masonry continues to work in heated areas underneath the tents and able to take advantage of some warm weather on weekends to make up some of the time that we've lost. These, Dogwood and Hawthorne kind of have a lag of about a month with the new additions and when summer renovations start. So really didn't impact us as long as we don't get any more crazy weather like we have. So that's kind of a quick update for you. Guys, have any questions?
Questions? Great. Thank you, Joe. Financials?
I want to bring your attention to the fund balance report. Just to let you know that we're still on target to meet the 17% end imbalance. As you look at Fund Five, though, you'll notice that it's going to zero. We're funding about a half a million dollars to cover our insurance program. We will be getting some rebates, but we haven't received those as of today. Did you have any other questions on any of the other reports in the package?
Questions? No? Thank you, Ginger.
And regarding Fund Five, I think, again, when we made that shift to self-funded insurance, we knew that it would take some time. Again, we've met with our broker today with True Scripts. We do feel like we're on track, probably with a quarter million in rebates by the end of the school year, if not more. We're also looking at some recoupment of...
Stop-loss.
Stop-loss insurance. So that will help offset that half a million dollar contribution to Fund Five. So we'll continue to watch that, monitor it. We know that was a pretty big decision. But in talking with some other school districts around the metro area, they are seeing sizable increases for not making changes, you know, north of 20% to 30% rate increases. So we're hoping that we made a wise decision and the timing was good. So more to come on that.
Thank you. We have a program evaluation for childcare.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Amy Baugh. I'm the principal at the Early Education Center. I oversee Puppy Pound for the last two years. Starting, right? Okay. So right now, we have 59 kiddos enrolled of Carney School District employees. We serve kids from birth to age six when they go to kindergarten. We have five classrooms, 11 full-time staff members, and one part-time. We're operational from 6:45 in the morning till 5:00 PM. Our tuition ranges from $638 a month to $757 a month. So the average hourly rate that employees are paying for childcare is $3.73 per hour per care. And then I've gone through each of our classrooms. So here's our infant room, our littlest Bulldogs. This classroom has a capacity of 10. Our final two will be added next month in February. We've got a couple newborns joining us. We also have a one-year-old room with a capacity also of 10 kiddos. They're a little bit busier in there. And then our two-year-old classroom has 11 kiddos this year. And it's always so fun to see the huge difference that one year can make. Our three-year-old room then is even one larger at 12. And then our four-year-old room, our pre-K room, are the kiddos that will go to kindergarten next school year. We have 16 kiddos in that classroom. Last year, our program goals focused on decreasing our balance deficit. We did not quite get that 2% that we were hoping for, but we have made some positive changes. So I anticipate this time next year, we'll be looking a lot better between tuition increases and then some right sizing with staffing. We'd also set a goal for our in-building staff report, that on our survey, we would have three and a half or better out of four in each of four staff surveys areas. We only hit that goal in one of the four areas last school year, so we're continuing that and hoping for some steady improvement for this school year. We're also going to add a goal of having that high satisfaction rate with a parent survey as well. So this year, also trying to make sure that the families that we're serving are equally as satisfied as the program staff.
Holly Wels could not be with us tonight, so I'm going to talk to you about Kids Club. Okay, so the purpose of the Kids Club program, as you know, is to serve before and after-school care for students in our district, K through five. And there's kind of three different parts of the program. So we run during the school year, to the first and the last day of school, and then also during summer school, before and after school, and then on that Friday that there is no summer school. And then Summer Expedition is July and August, and that's an all-day program that runs for four weeks. Some enrollment information, this is just last year's numbers, just to give you kind of a sense of how many kiddos are taking advantage of the program. So for just the regular school year, about 255. And of course, that fluctuates. Some families join in and some leave, depending on family needs. Summer school, 128 students. The summer school, the Fridays only, was 65. And then the Summer Expedition was 80 students. Here are some pictures of the four different sites that we have. So some program strengths, they, each elementary has its own site. There's experienced site coordinators at each of the locations. There's a variety of activities that are offered. There's clean environment, provided a junior leadership program for sixth and seventh graders, and then the Grow Your Own as well. The program goals, improve professional development to staff, especially in the area of behavior management, and then access a software system that supports the financial needs. So I know that there was one that looked, that they looked at last year. So just continuing to try to find a program that meets the needs of everyone in the program. Any questions?
Great. Questions, anybody? Great. Thank you all so much for coming. All right. Next, student achievement data. Hello?
Good evening. I'm Ellie Stewart, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And first, we're going to take a look at how we're doing according to the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the process of how they evaluate us and report how we are doing. We'll take a look at the 23-24 school year state assessment results, and then take a look at what Dr. Miller mentioned in our superintendent's report about our new assessment implemented last year, the NWA growth assessment, and how that impacts how we can better report to our stakeholders. So first, MSIP 6 is Missouri's way of just making sure our schools are doing what they should for students. It sets clear expectations of how we operate, what students should achieve, and the ultimate goal, making sure that every student is ready for college, career, or whatever path they choose. One of those key outcomes in MSIP is something called the Annual Performance Report, or APR. So think of it as our district's report card. It shows us how well students in the school and the district is just doing, meeting the state standards. What is MSIP 6? So it gives us a clear framework for improving and just being successful. It's built around three types of standards and indicators that guide us. The first one are our performance indicators. These are numbers and outcomes, like our test scores and our graduation rates, that get included in our APR. There's also continuous improvement indicators, a mix of numbers and practices that help us look at how well our district's running and improving, also part of our APR. And the third part are best practice indicators, more like goals or ideals for the district to aim for, not measured in the APR, but everything that we should just strive to achieve. When we think about our report card, that APR that I've mentioned, and the two categories that we're graded on, first is performance, and that includes our academic achievement status, our growth, what our state deems as success-ready students, so our college and career readiness assessments, and advanced credits, also our graduation rate, and then graduate follow-up, which is actually happening now with our administrators in the high school. A second part of that APR is our CSIP, our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, our response to standards, our climate and culture survey that Ray takes care of every year, success-ready activities that we do as a district, like starting at our kindergarten entry assessment, the ICAP, which is given in the middle levels, and our attendance, and CTE expansion, and then other required documentation as a district we're scored on. The three with asterisks, CSIP, Response to Standards, and Climate and Culture Survey, those are three areas that for the first two years of MSIP 6, the points were just automatically given to school districts. And this year, school districts were not automatically given those points, and you had to earn them if you got them. So as a school district, we create a strategic plan and set goals, align our resources, and implement evidence-based practices to improve our student outcomes. And we do that using data-driven insights and continuous improvement efforts. This graph shows you of just the distribution of around 550 school districts and charter schools in the state of Missouri, and how it's trended for the first three years of MSIP 6. If you notice a trend in these, in 2002, the blue graph on the left compared to the 2024 results, you'll notice that there's a trend of school districts moving more into that 80 and 90% range in their score. This year, another composite score was given in our APR or MSIP 6. So the composite score was calculated using those three-year averages of our performance data, and then summing and averaging points earned for each indicator and dividing by total points possible to generate a percentage that informed classification recommendations. So this is the first year school districts in the state of Missouri have had a composite score distribution. Carney School District's MSIP score was 86.2 with a classification of accredited. To get in the classification of accredited, you had to have a score between 70% and 94.9%. When we look at how we rank in other Missouri school districts, out of the 552, we rank within the top 10.5%. In comparison with our peer groups, in our APR scores, this year in 2024, you notice we were third in our peer group, right behind Smithville and Lee Summit. In our composite score, where they did the summing and averaging of the three years, we also came in third, right behind Smithville and Blue Springs. If you notice the trends in our peer group, that accredited classification, the 70% between in the 94.9%, all but one of our peer school groups, districts, fall within that accredited classification. So in our strategic plan, we have a goal that Carney School District students will annually maintain collective scores in the top 25% on all high-stakes assessments among cohorts in the peer school districts. A lot of the scoring in our report card for the state is heavily weighted with how our students do academically. It's what we're here for, and also the growth that they make. So out of the 19 tested areas, KSD came in the top 20% in 14 of 19 of those tested areas. Last year's state assessment data, overall as a district in ELA, Carney School District came in first in our peer group. In math, Carney School District came in third in our peer group. Science, we came in second in our peer group. And in social studies, we came in fourth in our peer group. Just a quick notation, the scoring in the areas of math and social studies, those were our best determination of where we ranked. There were a couple of school districts that had some suppressed data in multiple scoring areas to where we had to make our best judgment call of how those scores came out, because there was no way to figure out when there's too many missing scores. And that's what happens when cell sizes are less than five, from our data coordinator, Tammy Thomas, explaining that to me. On the ACT, Carney School District was first out of all the school districts in our peer group with an average score of 22.4. Some additional highlights, in addition to being highest in the peer group on the ACT, our eighth-grade ELA teachers and students were number one in the peer group. And the second place in our district in our peer group was, we were 9% higher than the next school coming in. So that's pretty remarkable. In English 2, all those students were also number one in the peer group, and that was two years straight. In eighth-grade math, the students were number one in the peer group, and that is for three years straight. So we get this assessment data in the summertime, and from there, we analyze the data, we create graphs and charts, and we work with building administrators to really help teachers identify maybe problem areas, and then also classrooms that might, having more success in other areas, so that teachers can collaborate and work together and always work in that continuous improvement mindset, where what can we do with our curriculum, our standards, and our resources to continually give the kids in Carney the best education possible? So Dr. Miller mentioned in her superintendent's report that we are working with the Success Ready Students Network, or SRSN. And some of that work that falls with assessments also includes a dashboard that we're going to be working on as an administrative team. And this dashboard will help us communicate and show our stakeholders in our community how we're performing in a real, more real-time format and be in better touch with everybody. And using our interim assessment, NWA, we'll really be able to use immediate data rather than waiting for state assessment scores coming in after the school year has ended, waiting to get that in teachers' hands until the next school year has started, and already a new group of students have entered their classrooms. So being able to use NWA, we give that assessment three times a year, and we can take those scores, and we can tell students more immediately how they're doing. Teachers have better results of how their students are doing, and administrators have a better understanding of how they're doing. So that dashboard that we'll be able to publish on our website will just be a much better way to communicate with our community of what's going on at KSD.
Can I ask a question on this?
Absolutely.
So if you have a teacher that...
So if you have a teacher that does successfully every year and has top-of-the-line achievement in their, like, whatever, I don't care what you pick, ELA, math, or science, right? And they're always achieving at a high level, but they don't show growth because they continue to achieve number one, number one, number one, is that a good assessment of staff?
Well, eventually plateau.
Well, at some point, like, you can't, like, you get to a point where you can't achieve anymore.
You can look at class performance, but you also want to look at individual student performance, and are we moving the needle on individual students? So there's different ways.
I see the value in the student piece of it. I'm more looking at it when she said the staff. I don't know that that's a good assessment for our staff.
Well, I think, yeah, if you're performing, doing an outstanding job performing, it's harder to continue to move the needle, right? We know that, but we also don't.
That would give that potential teacher a negative review because of that, because they're not moving the needle fast enough, high enough, quick enough.
We're not using the NWEA scores to evaluate a teacher. What we're doing is giving that teacher that lens to see how their students are doing in relation to standards and how they can immediately change instruction based on students' needs. So when I said it helps teachers, it's really just about informing teachers about getting more live results for their students rather than waiting for those high-stakes assessments to come in over the summer.
So the clarification is this isn't a review of teachers and their ability to grow? This would be okay? I miss, either misspoke or I misheard, either way.
No, yeah, it's really to empower the teachers to make good decisions on how they can modify their lesson plans and tailor it to meet student needs.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for letting me ask a question.
Oh, absolutely. I'm glad we cleared that up. That's super important.
Yep.
So just to give you a quick snapshot of how this looks, this is what, like, a district-level report looks like, and we can even go deeper, and teachers have reports for their own classrooms, and administrators have reports for their own buildings. But just to reflect on what John was saying, like, growth is so important. We have a lot of high-achieving students in Carney, and we want to make sure, even though you're a high achiever, when you're in our classroom for a year, we want to make sure you're making adequate growth, at least a year's growth, if not more. So what this report is able to tell us to do is not only how the students right now achieved in the fall, but how they achieved in the winter, and we can see is our achievement rising. But that really key piece that helps us is this growth percentile that we're able to look at. So on these reports, between the 41st percentile and the 60th percentile, it'll show us in that yellow range, and that is average growth. So like, a typical amount of growth for the amount of time a student's had. So 41st percent's at the low end of average growth, 60% is on the high end of average growth. So if you look as a district, and our growth from fall to winter, we were on the high end of the average growth for all of our students in the area of math. And same at the bottom, our students, we have, we're in the 57th percentile in math in our students assessed in 3 through 12, and then our achievement even rose to the 59th percentile. The other percentiles in colors that we're able to see is next, that green area, and that is the 61st through the 80th percentile, and that just shows us how many students are performing at that really high average range. And then you have that blue area, and that's our students performing at the 81st percentile and above and showing us how many are truly advanced.
And that's advanced based on growth?
The top, the growth line is what's based on growth, and then we can also see it on achievement down below.
Okay. Just want to make sure, it's a new chart, and I like it, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand it.
Yep, absolutely. Love questions.
See why we think this is more useful than just a year-end score from a map test, right?
Well, this also helps with the APR, because you're looking at growth, I mean, like, this helps us see the growth better.
You just, okay, segued into a commentary, comment, comment later, okay.
Sorry.
Because the APR is.
I can read it, you know.
The APR is solely based on the map, right? Where we find this to be more useful, touching kids fall, winter, spring, and allowing, you know, empowering teachers to make good decisions, right?
Yeah. I could see that.
So the slides from before where we were like second, fourth, and fifth, and that's only map?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Just that one-time high-stakes assessment, once a year.
That's what Missouri looks at.
Right, 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 and that's where their growth metric, right? There's a lot of volatility in how that APR gets reported, and so.
Ask the question.
And all students take the map test, like, like at the other districts, like, we're all, everybody's taking the same?
Three through eight takes the map test, and then there's the EOCs.
But the amount of kids that take it are not always equal, correct?
Well, there's, there should be, should be, everybody should be taking it, the map test.
But if you're talking math in Algebra I.
Oh, you're talking about, and of course exams.
Yeah, not EOCs, I'm talking math testing.
Map testing's grades three through eight, yeah.
Okay. Three through eight, okay. Just trying to make sure I know which one we're doing.
Yep, I got it, right.
So a quick snapshot of just how we're doing using this new interim assessment. This is our district growth and achievement overall, healthy in the high-average range in both of those. We're able to break that apart for principals, showing them that at the district level, and then they can also compare that in their building level. Do we need to send teachers to other classrooms? Do they need some planned time and collaboration together? How can we support each other and just work best as a district, creating great equity and education across in every building? Take a look at the third grade growth. They're hit the 61st percentile, showing that they're in that high-average range, and they still have those good, high-end-of-the-average achievement scores as well. Everyone's in that healthy range in the yellow. Eighth grade, we have some really high-achieving, high-achievement scores, and then also a really healthy growth score. We are able to take a look at those Algebra I students in eighth grade. Those are our students who are on the advanced math track, and so we know we have a lot of students who perform at that high-achievement level. If you look at that blue, that advanced range, but then we still have a really healthy growth score for those students in those classrooms. So they're not only high-achieving, but they're making good progress in their classes. Our Algebra II students showing that same trend with an amazing score, that 72nd growth percentile, super impressive for our students. Our geometry students are also showing great growth and achievement. As we take a look at our district reading scores through NWEA, super healthy achievement as a district went from the 61st percentile to the 64th, and then also high growth at that 61st percentile. So our teachers and students are just doing some great things. And then again, we can break that apart by grade levels and all within the healthy range in our growth and our achievement percentiles.
What's the turnaround time to get the information back to the teachers?
An overnight data upload, and then sometimes.
So if you did a fall test, it would be administered at what time? Like, it would be administered in October?
September?
September.
It's pretty early, yeah.
Okay, so if they did it in September, okay, so from that September test, what's the timeline? So say if it's the first week of September.
December, January is.
When do they get that, do they get, you know, if they did it in September, do they get the results from that September test when?
The next day.
The next day.
Soon as it stops.
Okay.
Rebecca, what was your timeline? When did you give fall and winter?
We waited on NWEA for two weeks. And then, and then we, usually, this year, we did something different with science, where we had ELA going first, just because, you know, asking all at once, and when the students were great, they did it, and then a whole week later, that was just.
Yep. Did you retest as well?
It did. Now, students were tested in their classrooms.
It's the immediacy of it, right? It's a lot more beneficial than the structure of the state assessment.
How close do our NWEA tests match to our standards?
So that was one of the reasons why we selected NWEA, is we felt like it, there would be a strong correlation to how kids would perform on the map assessment. That was the benefit to picking that.
But it might not be good for map at the end of the year, because those don't, NWEA doesn't match up with map necessarily?
Should, I mean, if it aligns to standard, go ahead, Ally.
Through the system, there is, in grades three through eight, not necessarily in specialized content like algebra and geometry, there's actually a part of the report that gives us a map score predictor that is aligned with Missouri standards. And in the best testing environments, we found that that aligned pretty well, and then after taking that once last year, we were able to reevaluate our assessment windows so that we weren't, hopefully this year, we will not be overloading our students with testing as much at the end of the year, creating some more balance and then a healthier test environment, but also being able to drive fourth quarter and getting teachers some information before the school year ends and keep using those scores.
I just want to point out, there's a whole lot of reasons to celebrate in the data that just got presented. I mean, not only the map data, but the NWEA data, I mean, our kids are performing across the board. So again, lots of reasons to celebrate. We recognize there's always room for improvement, always room for growth, but having an assessment protocol where we can actually use data real-time instead of having to wait just for the grade card at the end makes so much more sense. So that's why we stay with the Success Ready School Network. We feel like it's best for kids.
Well, I do like grades, but my question is really, or maybe more of a comment, is where we're doing the achievement in the blue, are we asking those teachers what they're doing and trying to repeat whatever it is they're doing? So like Algebra II, geometry, Algebra I, I mean, like, they're all in the top 80%?
Yes.
Are we asking them, like, hey, what are you doing that makes it work versus trying to recreate a wheel, find out what their wheel is and use it?
And that's what Ally was talking about. I think we're trying to be very transparent with grade level or content area teams. Here's your data, go and collaborate. How did you find so much success on the standard? The other thing that we're doing, we're going to go back to that Rutherford conversation where we are really seeing momentum happening there, where teachers are feeling comfortable and confident going into other teachers' classrooms to look at what instructional practices are in place and what things that they can take away. So again, how do you build that tight collaborative instructional team?
Because internally, you can break this down by building, correct?
By building, by grade, by content, by student, yes.
And we know our strongest teachers who we need to help lead those conversations and help us support new teachers and staff to the district. It's a really great way to support those conversations, and we give a lot of time dedicating subs and professional development money so that they have that time to work together.
Yeah, this is great data, great data. Nice job, Ally.
I don't want to leave our science teachers out. I'm going to finish up with that because this is phenomenal. Our grades five and eight are tested, but if you look at the district growth scores, that 63rd percentile is phenomenal, raising achievement scores, and those fifth and eighth grade science teachers really support what our biology department is able to do. If you take a look at their achievement, they went from the 65th percentile to the 72nd, maintaining that 72nd growth percentile. So that is just phenomenal, and in all areas, we have teachers who are fantastic. Any more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, next we have action items. Approval of the agreement with Roan Engineering?
Move to approve the agreement with Roan Engineering as presented.
Second.
All in favor? opposed, thank you. Agreement with Building Controls and Services?
Move to approve the agreement with Building Controls and Services as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on. This is all the deal with the bond money? Is that correct? Okay. For HVAC, for multiple buildings that were we.
Is it the deferred list? This was the, right? Deferred.
I think it's important that we mention that this was bond money, that we said when we did the bond, that this was one of the things that we did keep, which was more HVAC units.
Whatever funds left over, right?
This is part of the deferred maintenance package.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that's an important piece to, you know, we're not, what we said we were going to do, we did.
Very good. All in favor? opposed, thank you. Freedom Interiors Agreement?
Move to approve the agreement with Freedom Interiors as presented.
Second.
Same story.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I like an explanation. I mean, I know that we have a summary here, and we can all read that, but I think it's good that we at least tell everybody that watches this that we, this is a bond project.
This is absolutely part of the bond.
And that this is, again, another one of those pieces.
Yes.
Thank you.
When you add space to buildings, you'll need to.
You need the furniture to go with. I think it deserves a little bit of a story, so.
Yep, yep, yep. Eric, anything you'd like to add? Okay, he's good.
You want to come up to the mic and tell me a lot of stories?
Thank you, Eric. All in favor? opposed, thank you. Improvement of payment to coal printing?
Move to approve the payment to coal printing as presented.
Second.
Count to five. All in favor? opposed, abstain? Want to abstain?
Yep.
All right, very good. Board member comments?
Can I make one? Exciting times. I really enjoy getting to celebrate our students and the spotlights. I like both, and tonight was, I mean, it's a lot of fun to get to see all of those sports, you know, from, you know, from the band to our cheerleaders to our, you know, fall sports teams. It's really neat to see those kids and the successes that they've had, and the coaches, and you can tell the coaches, I mean, they just, they love those kids like they're their own kids, and I think that's a really neat thing that Carney has going on, as well as the spotlight and seeing the growth of our next generation of leaders. To me, that's, that's why you serve, is to see those kind of things. So like, I'm very appreciative that we get to do those, and wanted to tell you, thank you for, you know, getting that in front of us, because we can get caught in the minutia of the job. And then, Ally, nice job on the presentation tonight, and that's a lot of data, but I really appreciate you, and appreciate the teachers for the work that they do to get there.
Thank you. JR, thank you for coming tonight. We still do the 13-year picture. And I remember, I remember, I don't remember your mom, I graduated the year before she came on the board, but I do remember when she was on the board, and I was thinking, that was cool, that we had a woman, school board member. That was a long time ago. But it was really nice of you to come tonight. I did read her obituary in the paper, too, and was reminded of some of the other things that she did, so that means a lot to us.
I built gingerbread houses at their house.
You did?
Every year.
Oh, cool.
Me and my three, my sisters, the three of us.
Well, that's awesome. So thank you so much for coming, and thank you for your service to the Lawrence School District.
Yes. Thank you. It was neat to hear that, what you had to say about her. She, I know, I think my dad served with her on the board as well, so I appreciate her service very much, her time to Carney.
And you're not the first person to say that she was the first board member, you know, woman board member. I've heard that from other people as well. So I think you're safe in saying that, just so you know. Yes.
All right, thank you. Important dates, February 4th, we will have a board work session. February 12th is the professional development day, no school, hopefully lots of school until then.
I hope so.
Right, Bree?
Yes.
Bree wants lots of school between now and then. February 17th is President's Day, we have no school, and our next board meeting will be February 19th. All right, miscellaneous.
Action for closed session to immediately.
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in February, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Roll call, please, or, a second. Roll call, please.
Matt Baker?
Yes.
Len Broton? Meredith Cole? Yes. John Kern?
Yes.
Bruce Whitezer?
Yes.
Nick Vaskas?
Yes.
Darling Bailey?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.